Okay, so I will call to order the meeting of the Lafayette Urban Renewal. The purpose of this hearing is to receive input on the approved budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024. I am opening the public hearing. Is there any conflict of interest among the agency? Okay, Brandon's staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor or Chair of the Urban Renewal Agency. So as part of the functions of the city council, you're also the Board of Directors for the Urban Renewal Agency, which oversees the Urban Renewal Fund. You've seen as part of the Budget Committee, we had the total resources this year of forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. The only thing really being expended this year is going to be on materials and services and just keeping up with the filings, the state filings, the audit, and any small program deliverables. So that's pretty much the budget in a nutshell. We won't be doing any expending until we get some more money generated that we can carry over year over year.
So we have an action item, and it is Resolution 2024-01, adopting the Urban Renewal District Budget for fiscal year 2025. Is there any discussion? Or if not, as a resolution, I'm looking for a motion. Oh wait, no, public testimony first, because you're still in the public hearing. Is there any public testimony regarding the Urban Renewal District's budget? Okay, then I close the public hearing. And now we will facilitate any deliberations or address any issues raised in the staff report in regards to Resolution 2024-01, adopting a budget.
The district's pretty young.
Yeah, it's a pretty basic.
And I was just, it's different in my online version.
If you want to share mine. Okay, so I would just need any if emotion, if you guys are ready to approve it. Your motion.
I know there's a very specific way I'm supposed to say that.
Yes.
Thank you. I motion to approve Resolution 2024-01, adopting Lafayette Urban Renewal District Budget for the fiscal year of 24 through 25 in the amount of forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Very interesting number.
I'll second.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01, adopting the Lafayette Urban Renewal District Budget for the fiscal year of 2024-25 in the amount of forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Do you need this, Sarah? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Now, someone would like the motion for a good man. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. That was unanimous. Okay, now we will move on to our second meeting of the night. I am calling to order the Lafayette City Council meeting. Please rise to the mic, Slu. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the development of a vicious land, one nation, God above, in the fiscal.
Here. Counselor Carswell. Counselor Yogan. Here. Counselor Paulson. Counselor Buras. Counselor Kay. Here.
Okay, um, citizen input. So we are moving into our time of non-agenda citizen input. We do have rules that we follow from our city council rules. One of those being for those new to this process, this is the time for citizens to address councils. We might ask any clarifying questions we might have based on your statement, and then council can decide if there's a directive or direction they need to go to address it further at another meeting. With that, Jeff Bosworth, so if I call your name, and it's already written addressed on here, you don't need to restate your address, but when I call your name, please feel free to come forward. We do have that you keep about three minutes. Kennedy will be track for us. So Jeff Bosworth.
Okay, well, thank you all for allowing me to be here. Again, my name is Jeff Bosworth. I'm Lieutenant with Lafayette Fire. I'm also with Carlton Fire. As you can see, we have full firefighters. I'm honored to be here and to take this opportunity to share a few words about our chief. So bear with me. Tim is not a nine-to-five chief. He's there at 3:00 AM in the morning. Usually it's startling me because he sneaks up behind me on my call. He is someone that I'm calling on Saturday, even though it's supposed to be his day off. And I know he's going to answer it because usually I've broken something and I have to tell him. His transition into this role has been challenging, stepping in and taking over for somebody isn't easy, particularly where it's two departments with two cultures, especially when someone's been doing it for 25 years. But I can tell you, he's done it with grace, employees that really nobody else has, as far as I'm concerned. Despite what certain members of this community would have you believe, he continues to do this role, like I said, with kindness and grace. He has a servant leadership mentality. Yesterday, I'm enrolled in an E P class next month, and I realized my CPR card expired. And all he said to me was, when can we get this done? It's not a matter of, you know, waiting on me. It's when can you, when can you show up? That's why I'm honored to present to our chief a few items that our volunteers got him. So let's go to the first one. And I'll say to you, this is a quote from a Italian chief in Raleigh. People are jealous of those who are doing better than them. If you do the right things, excel, bring positive energy to your firehouse, you will have critics. Don't worry about the haters. Don't let them slow you down. So to that, I say to you, Chief, yeah, keep pushing forward. Keep making us great. Keep leading by example. Keep your expectations of us high. And as a famous movie quote said, just keep swimming. Thank you for your continued support and leadership, and thank you all for your opportunity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
I just want to thank these guys. They're the best part of both these departments. And without them, we wouldn't have what we have. So thank you, guys. They asked me to here, so I came for them, and I gotta go, so thank you guys very much.
Okay, so next is Marilyn DuBolt.
Madam Mayor, Marilyn DuBolt, 1133 Grinch Loop, Lafayette. I'm here on behalf of the LCAT Committee of the Lafayette Community Activities Team, and we do most of the major events in this city, as you know, this time. But we have a new one going on during the Fourth of July that we want to tell you about, our hot dog eating contest. It's going to be a fun event. It's going to be held at twelve fifteen on the Fourth of July, but Joel Burke's part. After most of our major events are his parade and so forth that you also help with, gentlemen, which we really appreciate. So thank you for what you do, but we want you to enter on contest. We have a maximum of ten. It'll be five minutes, eating as many as you can, and we do have some great prizes for you, sponsored by the shed. So thank you.
Thank you. And Brandon, are you representing the city? Is that what I heard?
Yes, yes, I am the, I am the expert hot dog eater. So, but no, yeah, we, we're excited for it. I'll be excited, but I know that there's some competition out there, so.
I forgot to ask council if they had any questions for clarification from Jeff. Let's get back to that quick note, or from Marilyn. Okay, next, Tom Reed.
I got a little issue. I don't want to make a big issue, but I think it's an issue that needs raising. A situation has occurred over time. These things happen, and they came living together. And I think we got a conflict of interest. I'm not calling for any action at this time or anything, but we do have an election coming up, which is a perfect time to resolve that situation. So I was just curious as to whether you had thought about one at least of you not running in the next election.
So I won't speak to my plans for the upcoming election. It's not appropriate form for that, but many legal scholars, there's no.
I didn't think so with Fannie Willis out of Georgia. And the county commissioner just ran into the same problem. So, you know, I just wanted to see, obviously you two don't see it as an issue.
Can you tell me the illegality of that problem?
Oh, no, I would not hear about illegality.
I'm gonna let it sit.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I would like to write in thirty minutes.
It's fine. I don't think right through this, Fannie Mae. There's no illegality, but there is unethical, and there's a conflict of interest.
What's, what's the conflict?
Well, how are you really going to be objective? I, I, I hold this to be self-evident. I will not even.
Appreciate.
I, I won't, I won't have the argument.
Okay, I'm gonna pause for a moment.
So I, I just wanted to raise it. If you're both going to run, that's fine.
I understand that you want, the, the process says he gets three minutes to speak, and then his time to speak is done. You may ask clarifying questions. I would like to make, and he can respond to this.
If he asks me questions, I'm just supposed to stop for three minutes and not answer them? Because that would be an awkward pause for three minutes.
I was done. I, I thought we, I thought. Question, I find it's a process. I think I had the answer.
I appreciate that concern. I do. But I would encourage you to go back and look at voting records. I would guess we probably vote against each other more than we do together. But I appreciate you bringing it up.
There's the optics too.
I'm wait, Tom.
So that's why I just want to raise it. No, no.
Was there any other counselors that have clarifying questions?
Serious what the conflict of interest was. I'm still nervous.
Two counselors living together.
Oh.
Oh, well, that's like saying you can't be one religion and that's.
No, it's not like saying anything, like saying two people living together on the council.
It can be a conflict of interest.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for clarifying questions only.
It's legal, it's legal, but it's wrong, and it's, we've got examples locally of it being not allowed, so. But okay, that's your choice, but I will probably make an issue out of it in the elect.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We have that noted on record as your opinion.
I'm just wondering what the issue was, but you told me what it was.
Okay, Sarah Horst.
I live at 134 South Houston Street. First, I would like to thank our fire department. Without hesitation, they always are there to help Washer Elementary School. They provided the fifth grade families with pancake breakfast this year. So that's very nice. So thank you. And then my other question is, when you guys originally discussed putting the gate up at Terry Park, it was discussed that it would, the gates would be open for the summer, the possibility of that, and that we would revisit that. So I am hoping that you revisit that as summer is starting, and people would like to use the park. And then my third thing is, you know, you are planning the budget, and that Bridge Street is definitely a large topic, but there's also Water Street in this town that is still a dirt road and services more than four houses, as previously stated in a council meeting. There are actually sixteen houses, I believe sixteen to nineteen houses, if you cancel Flag Lots off of it. And it is currently a dirt road with lots of potholes because it has not been done, serviced, whatever, maintained since I last complained about it. So I would love for that to be on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So your first thing was just a thank you. Brandon, what was your second?
Terry Park.
Terry Park. Is there any clarifying questions or? I know that, Sarah, I know that a few months ago, we had talked about, and I had shared my desire to have parks as general put onto the agenda, and a few things kind of bumped that, so I guess, especially with some citizen input. Can we either, I don't, I haven't seen the rough drafts of the next two council meetings, but can you find time either in July? I know we're already into the summer, but July preferably, but if needed into August to start a discussion with parks.
Was just how do you lock the gate in the evening, I think, was the concern was at the time.
Yeah.
And so there's the discussion.
Yeah.
So I've been doing some research. So it looks like we've, we've allowed Terry Park to always be open to motorized vehicles, and it was never supposed to be open to motorized vehicles. So that's going to take us looking at our park plan and assessing vehicles at the parks. So I misstated when, when we first talked, I thought it was particular parks, but looking at the park plan and the codes, no vehicles are allowed on any, on any of the parks. So that's why right now it's closed until we get a directive, so.
I've lived here over thirty years since I was born.
Yeah, well, I think it's one of those things that when we were, when we were doing the research, there's no, there's no motorized vehicles allowed on the parks, so, but I mean, if.
I do appreciate you bringing it back to, to a reminder to council that that was an open-ended issue or question when the gate or when the fence was put up, that that was a question we had for short term, needing to look at, so.
By the way, Brandon, can we look at adding on there the topics that were brought up about dirt bikes and hills and stuff down there?
And I think.
If we're going to cover it.
Yeah, I think we should maybe open up a conversation of all the parks, which would be more than not one meeting, but start with Terry. Just bicycle.
They like to call it dirt bikes, jumping on the hills.
It's a bike hunter.
I'm trying to use the right terminology with these.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have a clarifying question. Terry Park, not closed, right? Walk-in only is that? Okay, that is, so it is walk-in only, not, not closed, but the gates are closed, but the park is not.
Correct. Correct. And then is there, are you specifically asking for the same maintenance about Water Street? Is that something that you feel can be resolved with Brandon, or is that something?
I mean, I'd love for the distribution of it to be paved, but maintained at the very least.
Okay. Yeah, if you can send those to me, I'd love to have them too, just to like, but even if it's a screenshot and not the best quality.
Chatting myself will probably chat to you regarding the upkeep of it in its current state.
You have my number and mine.
Okay, next up is a Christine Brundegard could not stay and ask for a written statement to be made. So this is on behalf of Christine Brundegard. I do not have her address handy, but I do know it's on record. If you'd start the timer, I appreciate that. City Council meeting, June 18th, 2024, by Christine Brundegard during citizen input on non-agenda items. The reason for my emails and statement today is because I'm concerned that there may be an impact on the Lafayette Fire Department's ability to provide safe, competent emergency medical response to the citizens of Lafayette. Year to date, medical needs account for sixty-five percent of the emergency calls in Lafayette. But as of June 1st, following the sudden resignation of five medical responders, the Lafayette Fire Department was down to only one volunteer with emergency medical certification. While the remaining non-medically trained volunteers can and have been responding to medical calls, as I pointed in my May 18th email to the council, they are extremely limited on what they are permitted to do. I have validated through a review of the Yamhill County Regional Patient Treatment Protocol embarrasses that the Lafayette Fire or LFD operates under and have email confirmation from the fire chief that there are no other physician authorized protocols used by Lafayette to permit medical evaluation or care from non-medically certified responders. Outside of initiating CPR, only one of our current volunteers is certified to even touch a patient in medical crisis. This includes the ability to assess injuries, check and interpret vital signs, provide hemorrhage. Hemorrhaging, thank you. Control assist with childbirth, administer oxygen, epipens, naloxone, which is Narco, oral glucose for diabetic emergencies, dot, dot, dot. It's all, it's a long list of things our non-certified responders cannot do. I do want to be very clear, all medical calls to Lafayette will eventually have a medic response from an ambulance. The LFD's job is to support citizens in the three to fourteen minutes they are with the patient before the ambulance arrives from McMinnville or Newburgh. The problem here lies in evening, night, and weekend coverage. Every time you have non-medical volunteers responding to emergency medical calls, you are running the risk of delayed emergency care and/or some providing patient care that they are not trained or licensed to provide. This is not only a physical risk to our, to our citizens, it's a liability risk to the city and our volunteers. With this council direction last year to no longer provide extended fire department reports, I put in public records request for that information myself. This information emailed in advance and on paper in front of you tonight contains eighteen months' worth of data covering five different topics and why that information matters. The second to last page of that packet is one titled Council Awareness, that you will find the information provided to the council by the fire chief this month with a recommendation of what additional information would help provide a more thorough overview. The current IGA puts all operations, management of paid staff, volunteers, and the fire department building into itself into total control of the new Carlton Fire District. The city. And I'm going to not finish reading it. With the resident here, we can't ask any clarifying questions, but I do want to allow council to either respond or respond to Brandon.
This was submitted, so this will be in the public record for just.
Okay. She submitted it along with her whole packet. Is that whole thing going to be?
Yes.
Okay. So my apologies that it was longer than three minutes to read, but the whole thing will be there.
Well, I guess my question would be, what are we doing to bring in, encourage people to apply positions that? Like, are we, what are we doing for that?
Um, wait, 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 time. As council, if, if we need to ask questions, clarifying for her, it is not our, it's in our council rules that we do not put city staff on the spot to have answers, and so.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I just want to protect the fact, you know, that it's new information coming. But that is a good question.
I do have answers.
I know you do.
If I can clarify, it's a question for Brandon. We don't, we don't do the staffing Brandon does, right? Through the administration, so it's, it's a Brandon question.
Do we as council feel like there's enough, enough concern that we would like to? Or there are questions that we would like to bring forth at a further time, at further meeting? Yeah.
I think that it would make sense for counselors to have concerns to go to Brandon first, since he's in charge of staffing. And then if we have further concerns and want to bring it up here, I think that's probably, if we, you know, follow the chain of command, so to speak, we can go that way.
Can I make?
Yes.
So I.
Sorry, can you state your name? Okay.
My name is Tom Frank. I work at Station Seven in Peloton, and then I'm a volunteer here at Station Ten. Here's my medical certification right here, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you feel like there's enough medical coverage at the station?
Yes, yeah. You know, there may be not some people that are, that are certified, but they have way more experience than some people that, that are. So in regards to like certification and licensing, that sort of thing, you know, there's some doctors that work in the ER and some doctors, you know, that kind of don't, you know, work in the ER. I mean, they're going on calls on the front line. They're seeing probably just as much, you know, just as in ER. But I would say, yeah, there's one of the people that have licenses.
Thank you.
We do have time for public input if others want to speak on this topic in just a moment. Brandon, is there any other questions or directive to Brandon besides the suggestion regarding the information? Christine presented that if you have questions regarding this, to please reach out to Brandon, and then we can move on to other people. I just want to quickly state that I have read all the information. I've been, I have been CC'd and had meetings with the chief. I'd like to go on record in saying that my main concerns was hearing a change in roster, and there was satisfying supplemental and other staff or volunteers that I did not feel that there was an emergency at that time to bring it to council as a issue. And I also will continue to go to Brandon and the chief as needed to make sure that I am hearing answers to any of my questions. With that said, we do have some time if someone would like to speak or speak again.
Jeff Bosworth. So a few clarifying points in that document. I've been with the department for six years. There's some inaccuracies in that, so to address some of the concerns, we are, if you do CPR and you do the basic first aid, you are allowed to touch the patient. You are allowed to stop the bleed. We are allowed to provide Narcan that is sold publicly over the counter. Anybody can use it. We are, according to Doc Kaiser, you've been told we can take vitals, we can take blood pressure for qualified. Take it all the time. Mine's really high right now. We can take, you know, whole socks, we can take, we can chart. So I will also give some insight that there was a group of us that were doing our EM. So I will also give some insight that there was a group of us that were doing our EMR class. We were doing that back uh December approximately. Uh, one of the individuals that quit, uh, stopped teaching it. So we were all left in high, high and dry. We were gonna take it in Dayton, but because we took it here and then we're left high and dry, uh, it is what it is. There are currently uh three of us right now who are spending about five thousand dollars to go get our EMT in Arizona next month. Uh, that's out of my pocket, so I get really offended when uh, anybody wants to say that there's no medical coverage or that, uh, we're not here to support the community. Uh, we are here to support the community. These things take time, uh, just as the volunteers take time to get uh, trained up and running. It is a commitment. I work fifty hours a week. I'm at the station about forty, forty-five hours a week. You agree? So it is a time commitment. Obviously, these are valid concerns, but I, uh, without saying too much, I think there's uh other issues going on here. Um, and I will let Brandon uh address that. Um, and of course, if you have questions, you can reach out to Chief, um, and we can follow the chain of command if you want to speak to me directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can go.
So I guess, has we, any other further public input? Okay. Tiger, right?
Yes. Uh, Art of Wisconsin, and I also have my emergency medical responder license, and so it expires in two years. So I'm getting my EMT in October, so just adding that. To say that we're not certified originally, one, it's kind of a interesting claim, so, yeah. That's all.
No longer complain about ta- having to pay by forty dollars to take the class or five thousand. I had no way.
So none of us are, uh, none of us are paying, the department's not paying, it's, it's out of pockets.
Wow. Thank you. And they have to fly there to go take the class and spend the night in hotel.
In two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wow. Thank you for that. And again, thank you for taking care of us and being there for us. Appreciate it very much.
And your name was just from?
I'm Kathleen Carl.
Yeah, last call for public input.
Yeah, I got something to say.
Okay.
Hi, my name's uh Joe Monger. I was a volunteer at Lafayette Fire Department, uh firefighter EMT. For almost six years, I was one of the, uh, one of the recent people that resigned. Excuse me, I uh ran down here from my house. A couple inaccuracies with what Lieutenant Bosworth was saying. Um, I was actually teaching the EMR class that he was referring to. I'm a paid captain down in Sierra Fire. Uh, five of my firefighters down there graduated recently from that EMR class. All of the LFD personnel dropped out of it, so it's still going on. Excuse me, sorry. So it's still going, it still went on, even though he says that it it didn't, um. They dropped out of it. They had the opportunity to pass. I wanted to clarify that point um on there as well. I also paid for my own EMT as a volunteer, uh, well before I was paid staff, um, down in Silver Rock. I uh, thank you. Sorry, I literally ran down here. I just wanted to clarify, by that, um, that I was the one that was teaching that class. It it still went on as an accredited class of the state of Oregon OHA, um, and I actually had five graduates graduate. EMR class, Jeff Bosworth and Lieutenant Bosworth, excuse me, and a couple others dropped out. I'm not sure what their personal reasons were, but there was no high and dry at all. It was definitely not what happened. I proudly served in my community for almost six years. Love doing it, still love doing it. Um, I resigned, obviously, uh, that's a story for another time, but um, I just wanted to clarify that point, point there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any um clarifying questions for? Joe, sorry, I was gonna call you Jeff, cause I'm sorry, it's lost. Any um clarifying question? Okay. Um, I think we're going to close public input time. And with that, I think the biggest topic of the night, it's been said and directed that if you have any questions with all the information that has been shared with you, please reach out to Brandon. Or Chief, I know, has offered to answer any questions, and if after that you feel that there is any concerns, please make sure Brandon knows to put it on the agenda. If that's the course you feel. Okay. With that, public input is closed. Can you pass this down to Brandon so that it can be available needed? Okay, now with that said, we've got a lot of public meeting ordinances and resolutions. So bear with me as we jump into the of the required stuff here. Okay, public hearing, oh, sorry, additions and deletions to the agenda. Any additions or deletion? Um, public hearings, public hearing number A, building permit fee schedule. The purpose of this public hearing is for Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash there, for Resolution Establishing Building Department Permit Rates and Clarifying Language to Prepare for the State E-Permitting Program. I am opening the public hearing. Are there any conflicts of interest?
I have conflict.
Okay. Um, staff report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this uh public, public uh hearing is uh one of the final steps uh the building uh permit, well, the the E-Permitting New Building Program uh rollout. According with the state uh Oregon's Department of Land and Conservation and Building, uh, we have to actually have a formal public hearing. Um, since we are revising the rate, um, or the permit fee schedule for the new program, so um this is a state requirement.
Okay.
So at the um, the, in front of you, you have two additional support packets that'll be a part of the minutes. Um, one is the state filing notice that had all of the permit fees, and the other one is a more um clearer version of the uh fee comparison. Um, the fee comparison is not actually part of the reso- the resolution as much as the um actual permit fee schedule is that was filed with the state, so that's in addition to that as well. So all that's been filed with the state, and the requirement is to have a public hearing if anybody wants to speak about the proposed, proposed fee schedule.
I see. So is there any public testimony regarding this topic? Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Council deliberations, however, um, the resolution part is later on in the agenda, so is council fine with not deliberating now and doing the resolution? Okay. Next up. Public hearing B. Um, the purpose of this hearing is to receive, oh, sorry, did I close it? Closing the hearing. Okay. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on possible use of state shared revenues, which are comprised of state taxes from gas, cigarettes, and liquor sales and other shared revenues. I am opening the public meeting. Is there any conflict of interest? Okay, staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, so the sh- the state shed revenue, which comes off of what is considered syntax, cigarettes, gasolines, marijuana, and alcohol. Um, that comes into a pool of money as well as the um, the gas tax, and we just put that in the general fund. We don't dedicate to anywhere specifically. We just put it into the general fund resources. So there's nothing allocated for it specifically.
Um, any public testimony regarding this topic? Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Brandon, there's a, this is part of a further.
Yes.
Okay, so is council again, fine with the deliberation and discussion during that? Public hearing C. The purpose of this hearing is to receive input on the approved budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five. I am opening the public hearing. Is there any conflict of interest? A staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. So um in front of you, uh, well, we've had discussions over with the budget committee. We've had two meetings with the budget committee. Um, in front of you today and in front of the public to comment on is the budget, the proposed budget um, in excess of uh seventeen million dollars. That includes everything from, uh, we have money for Broad Street. Uh, now, we have about six hundred thousand dollars dedicated to streets in general. Um, this also includes a four percent, a water rate increase, but also um a three dollar sewer uh meter uh charge increase to that. The, the capital improvement plan is smaller this year than last year. Um, we want to kind of focus on a back-to-basics approach, especially when it comes to trying to provide adequate services at a reasonable cost. So um this year, a lot of the, a lot of the extra work's gonna go towards grants, um, planning, and then also uh Broad Street. So those are the big high-level items this year.
Okay, um, any public testimony regarding this topic?
I have a question with regard to the meters.
Yeah.
Ask that question?
Yeah.
How much overall did it cost to have those new meters transferred over? And was that cost picked up slowly by the landowners, or was that uh subsequently offset by the city or? Because not everybody has had their new meters, so like, my cars was recently dumped.
Yes, so um it was a two-year cycle. It started, I think, the year before I came on board. Um, it was supposed to be a three-year program, but we decided just to do it all in two years, just because the efficiencies and whatnot. So it was, uh, most of it was maybe paid out of um the uh system development charges, which is what the develop, the new developments pay into the system. So we were able to use SDC money because it's gonna help with the accuracy and um uh in the expansion of the improvement of the system. Um, and then there was some operational money, um, that came out of the revenues from received from water, but a lot of it was gonna be paid from the SDC. I wanna say like a sixty-forty split. So the new developers paid for a good majority of it.
Yeah. Just to be clear, on the SDCs, those aren't paid even by the people buying those new houses, they're paid by the people building them. It's like that new development going, I don't know where I'm going. The new development going in up there.
It's directional sign.
It's, it's the big company building the houses that's paying those, not the residents.
And Brandon, were ARPA funds used for some of them? I can't remember.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Partly why we also decided to do the two years, because we're gonna do it sooner, but then there was some delay with getting the items, and then they upped and speeds the cost.
And the ARPA funds or the American Rescue Plan Act, which was money given from the federal government during COVID for cities to deal with infrastructure.
And we, another reason for the two year instead of three was the costs on the meters were going up substantially. And so we wanted to purchase them before the price went up. Look at that teamwork of all of us having an answer. Um, any more public testimony regarding the budget? Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing. Um, council again, okay, with further discussion later of the agenda. Okay. Next up is approval of minutes. Was there any corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna try again? It's hilarious, the same word. It's the same. We've done a few times, okay? So, action items A, okay? The last line of the wording of the motion should be exciting, ten B, instead of accepting, ten B. It should be accepting instead of accepting. And I mean, E X. P T I N G, except, right, except for accepting, instead of an accepting.
Yep.
Does that make sense what I'm talking about? I feel like we've gone through like this one word a few times, but hopefully we'll, we'll get it done, right?
One, one words.
And now it's gonna be forever engraved in our head, and we're gonna mess it up.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel to Gilligan, that is, this is not, this isn't something you wanna hold off on, just?
No.
Change, okay.
As soon as we hit the right exception, we'll be good.
For the future, when someone references this or unsafe, let's get that changed.
All right, with the noted change, I move to approve the city of Lafayette City Council meetings from Thursday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
One second. Okay. I have a motion on the table to approve with the changes, the um, city council meeting is dated Thursday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. On favor. Any opposed? Pass. Okay, moving on to action items. Some of this might sound redundant because of the hearings. We are moving into the first reading of ordinance six, four, seven dash, or not dash, but repealing the building code inspection program. Brandon, am I supposed to open a public hearing for this too?
Oh, well, public comment.
Because you have the script.
Oh, it has a public forum on it, my mistake.
Okay. So, um I don't have to do purpose of this hearing, right? That whole thing was a mistake. Okay, so, um is there any staff report on this?
Yes.
Before we jump in?
Yeah.
I'd like to announce a conflict on this.
Okay.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, as city staff work with the state of Oregon Building Code Division, uh, we discovered our operating plan was out of compliance with the state, one of those things that we were just going through as we're going through the process. Um, in the past, they had been approved by ordinance, which is normally for, you know, which is normally a law. Um, but what we wanna do is, or what they're suggesting is because the plan is not a policy, a resolution can be done. So we wanna repel the previous ordinances with the, with the building inspection program, and then we wanna create the new building inspection program next month with the resolution after the second reading.
Okay.
So, so this is gonna be added date because of the, the fee structure, how we administer the program, um, et cetera. Uh, the authority of the building officials, it has everything laid out on there. That's gonna be completely scrapped, and we're gonna come up with actual um, in the building patient plan.
Okay, so tonight, we're just doing the first reading. There's no discussions or anything, right? We're just first reading. So I, we already know of a conflict of interest. Does council object to reading this ordinance by title?
No.
No.
So.
Okay, this ordinance number six, four, seven repeal, this is ordinance number six, four, seven, repealing the Lafayette Building Code Inspection and Operating Plan Ordinance is five, zero, six, five, eight, eight, and five, nine, seven. And um, this is the first reading, so there have no been changes since the first reading. Um, any further comment from council? Okay, so now we, that's all, because it's first reading, now we're moving on, correct, Brandon? Okay. Now we move on to the second reading of ordinance six, four, six, amending the LMC chapter eight building. Any conflict of interest?
I have conflict.
Okay. Any staff report needed, Brandon?
Yes, like mentioned in the past, um, so as we work with the seller, the uh state program, the ACELIA, um, we have to comply with the state's codes for clarification. Um, and it's been a while since we, we had revision to the program. Um, and so there's a lot of things in chapter eight that just redundant, that no longer, that no longer are applied to the city. So um we will be uh asking for approval tonight with the revision to chapter eight. And all those revisions are gonna be in bold and underlined. Um, anything that's gonna be taken out will be scratched out with the final ordinance when it's uploaded.
Is there any objections to me reading title on ordinance number only?
No.
Okay. This is ordinance number six, four, six, relating to the enforcement of building codes and amending Lafayette Municipal Code eight point zero, zero, zero through eight point two, five, five. Since we did the second reading, is this, do we move straight on to?
Deliberations.
Deliberations, and then we can do the motion? Okay. Any council deliberations? Any public statements? Okay, um, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you. Um, a suggested way. We need a motion. I don't think there's one written.
Assume to approve ordinance six, forty-six, amending the LMC chapter eight building. Code based on the draft in front of us, dated June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Same. Okay, I have a motion in front of us to approve the ordinance six, four, six, amending the LMC chapter eight building codes, um, with the changes set forth in front of us.
Just clarifying, my conflict will make me abstain from this.
Okay. Any further deliberation? Okay, um, all in favor of the motion set before you? Any opposed? Motion passes, if there's something I have to read because of that. Now therefore, being ordained by the council of the city of Lafayette, we amend the Lafayette Municipal Code as detailed in exhibit A of this ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect on the thirtieth day after the second reading by the council approved by the city council of the city of Lafayette this eighteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, we are moving on to. Okay, we are moving on to. Uh action item eight C, the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Building Code Division for E. Permitting uh staff report.
Just going to announce conflict on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so um as we obviously work with us out the state to do this. They are going to administer the website. They're gonna take care of all the technical details. So there's an IGA that was drafted pertaining to who does what. The only thing that I wanna make sure that I I state publicly, there is a number in there um where they can charge us up to, I think, fifty thousand dollars. Um for um for the contract. So.
Page four, by the ways, number four.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So um. As long as we use everything that we ask to be built out for, they will not charge us. So an example is, um if we go and ask for to use the public works platform in three or four years. And we build it out, we get everything going and then say there's a change in leadership and just. Whatever, nobody wants to use it, it nobody likes it. We don't communicate that we don't wanna use it anymore, or they do their all this time and effort into it and we don't use it. They can they can backcharge us time and and all that to it. We don't foresee that happening, obviously. Um this is, we're focusing just on the permit review side right now and the plan review. We're not looking at doing anything bigger than than this, but the IGA covers anything we wanna do later on. So I wanted to make sure to clarify that because there's a number on there and it's it's a number that could be concerning, but we do not have any plans to use any of the. Um other modules at this point and we'll come back to you all for a general consensus. We wanna move the public works platform. We wanna do so and so. But right now we are not even looking at anything but the permits.
So basically they have that in as a clause.
Yes.
So that cities don't. Give them a bunch of work just for the fun of it to be like, oh, we want this, this and this and then.
Yeah, so it's legalese and and David has uh David has read all written. He agrees with everything in there.
If we're not using the module, then why is it even named?
It's it's the standard, it's their standard IG that they use for all the cities that they partner with. Cause I asked about that and they don't. I'm sorry?
This applies to all the other cities?
Yes, it it's in all the cities IGAs.
Anything in writing? To their explanation of that?
Yes, I have. I I mean, I I can get them an email, put it with the IGA, but we had a phone call about it.
Okay, but there's there's nothing in writing from them saying that. The the purpose of that. Is. Like it won't be charged and let.
No, no, I mean, I I called for clarification because I I kind of understood it, but I wanted to make sure it was stated on the staff report. And it was public, but I mean, I can ask for a a letter from them just stating this is their normal operating procedure for the IGA.
My concern is that are they gonna apply that provision to the fees?
Nope, nope.
Does the contract specifically say that they can't do that?
No, so the whole the whole point of us getting off to the program is they're building it out for the state for the state rollout. If we had asked for any additional platform, that's gonna take time and it's gonna take all the tech support, so then. They're concerned, they've done it in the past where they built platforms out for cities and they hadn't done. And they said, yeah, we charged something like a city seven thousand dollars last year because we built a platform out and they didn't use it. So we pulled up seven thousand dollars. The only platform, so that's like an addition to the state platform. So the state platform with the E with with this, this is all being done. There's no charge to this. This is just because they administered the program because we are going into a system that the state oversees. So.
And the city attorney did sign off.
Um any public input? Any council discussion further than what the question would be just asked?
Can you remind me how long the contract was for?
Um well, it's in perpetuity. I mean, this we're gonna be in this program unless we decide not to do it in five, ten years, but. Um the whole point of doing the state program is because it's very compared to other programs, so.
And it does list a way for us to. To um get out and. And terminate it. I think it said that how they can terminate it also.
Yeah, yeah, both parties gonna terminate.
Uh so whether this goes forward or not, would you attempt to reach out and get something in? In writing so that the future down the way, you know, other councils or whatever.
I can I can attach to the assigned product if it passes. And I can even forward the email once I get it from the state if you'd like further.
I'm more con- not more concerned, but that, you know, attaching it then, you know, future. We all know that councils rotate and this is a perpetual thing, so.
Oh, it says. There are the laws states that it must, it'll be agreed upon. Um prior to any inflammation, so.
So the charges we have to agree to before they charge.
So I think sufficiently.
Okay.
And I just wondered, I mean, most probably, some people may not even see that or but I saw that and I was kinda concerned like.
Yeah.
That number jumped out and I know, you know, I wanna make sure we're as transparent as possible before if you all decide to approve this, so.
Okay.
It would be good to know if we decide to build a platform, how much it's gonna cost. If we decide to build it and then decide not to use it, so.
That's right, we we also wanna, you know. Later on down the line with either public works or code enforcement stuff. I think this is gonna be a big tester for other cities around the state to see if they wanna like. You know, like instead of a Go Gov or something, we can latch out to this, but I would make sure that this is good to go and the relationship's there before we start looking at other things.
Personally, I like this. I think this is a good, a good first step. Good one, eh?
Okay. Our next step is we either move on or we have a motion.
Uh all move to through the intergovernmental partnership agreement with the state of Oregon's Building Code Division and authorize the city administrator to. Execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Execute. That's supposed to be execute.
I'm just gonna jump in again and say in connection with my conflict, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve intergovernmental partnership agreement in the state of Oregon's. Building Code Division and authorize the city administrator to execute. The agreement. Any further comment? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Brandon, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Next up. Resolution two zero two four zero four per building permit fee schedule, so we just had a. Did we just have a hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, there's so many of them. Okay, um staff report, any further staff report or is it still the same?
Uh I mean, it's been the same for, I think I shared this.
If I may, I'm just gonna jump in and restate a conflict on this.
No, I mean, I think I shared this first. I think I shared the first fee schedule that staff worked on maybe five, six months ago. I haven't had any feedback. Um the state um posted it on their website and then through their means, they got no comments on it. Um and I confirmed with Jasmine and Jamie, we received no phone calls. Um regarding anything, so um obviously it's been a long time since we updated the fee, so there's some numbers there that are drastic. Um but this is gonna be, you know, this is gonna be a little bit more equitable, the the time spent and and and. The money spent is gonna go back into the program instead of some of the subsidies. Um so we'll be aligned now with where we need to be and then obviously as we become more independent. Um from Newburgh and and planning um as we grow that department. This this is fairly adequate. We should have to come for another fee. Schedule update for a while.
And is any, is either of these two? Sorry, you gave us updated ones.
Yes.
Um are either of those going to be like, these will be online for residents to?
Yeah, it'll it'll be a part of our um like our fee schedule, yes.
Okay. And the public discussion or statements? And the council?
Just one typo that I saw. The page number that the the one I got was page seventy eight. It's in the blue box in the middle. Down at the bottom, the the number. Um the comma is in the wrong place.
Oh, the commercial mechanical humor fee, ten thousand?
It it should say a hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
Hundred thousand and one, it just is.
It's a big cost difference.
Thank you on that one. If approved, we we can change that in revision.
Yeah, mine said draft, so I thought, I can do draft.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, this is the point.
These fees are, okay, just one, one other question, I guess.
Yeah.
These fees now, we're not, these are not um sharing fees with with Newburgh and this would. Start coming to us.
Well, not while, so the the fees that we're paying for Newburgh right now, the the fees have gone up or they stayed, I mean, the fees have stayed the same. While the the workload and whatnot for for Newburgh has increased. And these fees haven't changed to to kind of balance those times of the money that we put out. Um so these these are coming back to like be where we where we would be with our expenditures, with staff time. On the permit side, but also on the plan review side, so all these have taken all that into account. Um so we should still, we're still dealing with Newbrook for the time being. It may be three, four or five years, depending to where we can be dependent of that, but we're working towards. Being completely our own um inspection and building department.
Sure, okay.
Russell, can you remind me what page that typo was on?
Uh seventy eight, I believe it was in my, in the.
Yeah, yeah.
Brandon, remind me with the switching to this online, the building permit. Um system will issue into the land permits beta. Where it's still gonna go super slow with.
So Newbrook has increased their service dramatically um over the past three or four months. We've had some conversations with the middle um middle, missing middle um miss some. Missing middle housing um meetings we've had. Um I know they had some staff turnover. Um so we're working a little better together, but in terms of independently, we are actually gaining a bigger knowledge with Jasmine going to doing some trains and stuff. So on the ones that we can approve, they're going through quicker. Um but we're also um doing our best to walk through the process. Um we're finding out there's some restrictive items regarding the downtown development and I think some of those restrictions. We weren't expecting to be so restrictive when we were discussing like the city center market or. Um you know, Apostos and Bridge Street, so. Things like that, but we're we're working our way through that. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or we can motion or move on?
We're working our way through that or around that? Are we, are we?
So while we're working our way. Okay, excuse me then, ar- around that. Oh, through that, so yes, yeah, we are, we're not giving anybody special privileges, correct?
They're working, yeah, they're working, from my understanding with Brandon, they're working through those hoops. Not ignoring them. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any further?
Okay.
I move to approve res- resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four for the building permit fee schedule effective. July first, twenty twenty four.
I second.
And again, I'm just going to remind in connection with my conflict, I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay. I have on the table a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero four for the new building permit. Be scheduled effective on July first, two thousand twenty four with the noted change to page seventy eight. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Like we always have to raise rates. Let's go the other way or something.
It's some election season, help me lower. Kind of like a jump the gas, you know? Many times. Okay, um resolution two thousand twenty four zero five amending the watering through utility rates. Do you need to abstain?
No, I'm good.
Okay. If you wanna ask, you can now. Okay, staff report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as part of the budget, I know last year, I think we made a mistake on um how we. How we had them. We actually, I think we were gonna approve the budget before we approved the rates and then we had another whole special meeting, so I wanted to avoid that. So I made sure I followed the the right process, so this just uh goes over the rates that were discussed with the, that were approved by the budget committee. Formalized them via resolution. Obviously, you'll see it'll be effective with the July twentieth water rates, so the bill will see probably around Labor Day. Um we will see a four percent increase to the water rate structure. And then we will see a three percent increase to the base sewer rate. Um this was all approved by the budget committee.
Three dollar.
Three dollars. And both of those are on exhibit A and B regarding that. And just for clarification, nothing with the um. Uh water maintenance surcharge or the debt surcharge will be increased. Those are still staying the same from last year.
And I wanna make sure we're clear on the reason that the water sewage utility rates are go- that this was not part. Of what was discussed last year.
Correct, well, this was kind of.
Sorry, the sewer, I'm sorry, that larger portion, the. The sewer rate part.
Correct.
The um water. Rate part, we did specifically correct.
Yeah.
I'm I'm looking at you.
The four percent water increase was part of the solution to the debacle that happened with water last year. The four percent was planned. It was talked about in a large meeting with a lot of the public. We fixed it knowing we were gonna have to do four percent a year.
And I think the public was supportive of that.
I just wanna make it very clear that we, it was not just that council knew. That that four percent was coming, but it was part of. Coming to. Yeah, the larger community discussion at the council meeting that was held over at. Um the fire station, okay?
Which had to solely do with water rates, not.
Yes, which is why the sewer.
This surcharge of three dollar one is for the sewer.
It's getting back, it's getting us back up to, I think it was the twenty eleven rates. Cause we, when we did that sunset, so we're getting, we're just getting back to where we were in twenty eleven.
And we didn't do a uh more than that four percent. Um or what, uh for the sewer rate last year because we had not. Like this is.
Yeah, we're waiting for the sewer, the sewer rates.
Held off, so, okay. Um any public input? Any council more clarification?
Um just a quick question for my own information. How many meters do we have and how many new ones coming from the new? Uh new construction?
So we have uh about fifteen hundred and twenty five available. Meters, available means ones that aren't um non, you know, like the city ones we don't count for, the ones that we have on on the way road as part of the Eastman's.
Right.
Um and then we're gonna be getting another. I'm gonna turn the chat on us. We have another what, forties or so going in? In the in the in the faces at Meadow Brook that have already, haven't been installed yet because they're not ready to be installed.
Yeah, real.
Yeah, so when the final inspection is done, we put the meter in and like where we have with the meter roll out, we're just about all done with that, right?
Oh, that's ongoing. I mean, we're hoping by your, we're getting, it's setting a hundred a month, but we only have a short time, right? The first it will fit to get installed and install. So. We're doing as best we can.
And we're continuing to monitor um potential water leaks and notify customers suspected, okay?
Yes, yes, we do, we do all the time and. Try and.
We've seen a decrease in water leaks.
We were actually talking about that earlier, so we're um. You wanna talk this better than than either since.
So, yeah, so I'd like to address the city consumption report after finding out information. I've been digging into it, so. Your consumption reports are invalid.
Okay, so we can discuss that when we get your reports.
Okay, so maybe tonight, tonight. Okay, um I just wanna before we get to motion, um. Want to acknowledge the fact that this council is not all, was not part of last year's council. But that this council has stuck with the four percent. It's not anything higher than what was discussed last year. I just. I mean, it could be higher than four, we are, we're sticking with what we.
Much less than other utilities are going up.
Yes, that we are holding true to our four percent projection from last year.
Okay, uh I move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five, which amends the water and sewer utility rates for fiscal year twenty four twenty five.
I'll second this one.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five. Which remains the water and sewer utility rates for the fiscal year twenty four twenty five. Any further comment? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
About what we'll answer on September first.
At July.
July.
July, July twentieth billing cycle, so we'll get it, we'll get it in September, around Labor Day.
So what, when will it's, will it be in this next newsletter though?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put some education out here, so we can still be prepared for that first bill in September.
Okay. Next, oh. Um. Resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero nine, adjusting the SDCs for parks, transportation, water systems.
I am announcing a conflict.
Caught on with the SDCs, I'm getting smart. Okay, um staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when going over the SDC methodology for sewer, we realized that last year in the transition in between the new councils and new management team. Um that the actual SDC um increased. Um, that the actual SDC um increase that was mentioned as part of the methodology in the parks, transportation and water systems. Even though it was mentioned, it needs actually be approved yearly. So these will be coming yearly, even though they're mentioned in the methodology. Even though you approve the methodology, you don't necessarily have to approve the rate increases every year, even though the method, methodology is recommended. So we're not gonna go, we're not gonna back bill it and make up for the, for the year missed. Uh, but looking at the engineering news record, CCI, um, the SDCs for water. Transportation and parks would go five point six percent. Again, these SDCs are paid for by the developer when they construct the uh housing, so there's no direct cost to people who live in the city already.
So let's be clear, is that cost does move to the higher, cause it.
Yeah, I don't wanna. But if that, this is not, this doesn't affect those that are already.
And so every, so every year is part of the process now, we just have reminder now, they don't automatically go, they need to, even though it's recommended. We don't wanna get into the habit of doing things automatically, so bringing them every year to get, I, I voted in on is the best way to go.
And I know that some cities are really pushing to try to lower theirs, but ours was so far behind, or at least this is how I'm interpreting it. Ours was lower, too low to begin with, that we don't have that luxury of trying to scale ourselves.
And, and, and then if, if there was ever a project, especially some of those other cities that are doing to nonprofits or, or smaller, uh, lot build outs. While we don't recommend it all the time, somebody can always come to council and propose, we wanna do, you know, uh, multifamily, middle income or. Lower income, they can always come and ask for SDC to be waived and ask them to, you're sorry.
Yeah, I think one of the cities is doing something for workforce housing or something, under a certain square footage to try to encourage the smaller builds.
All right, let's avoid that discussion. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. That adjusts system development charges for park transportation and water systems.
I'll second it.
Hey, I have on the table a motion to approve resolution two thousand point four dash zero nine. That adjusts system development charges for park transportation and water systems. Any further comment from council of?
What was an SDC?
Sorry. The math, magic, and I think, yeah.
So when somebody purchases land and starts building a home, they pay these costs. And that those costs go to future costs for us to maintain the water, um sidewalk, streets, parks. It's just a initial contribution to those costs.
The whole town.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, okay, let me re-motion, read this. I motion to approve resolution two thousand point four dash zero nine. That adjusts system development charges for park transportation and water systems.
I think you can take that motion.
Yeah.
To approve that.
Sorry, that was already, sorry, I have on the table a motion to approve. Sorry, resolution two thousand point four dash zero nine. That adjusts system development charges for park transportation and water systems. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion approved, any opposed? Thanks for catching that, I was beginning from that. Okay, um. Now onto resolution two thousand point four dash zero six, elect to receive state revenue sharing. Do you need a conflict?
I think that was my last conflict.
Okay. Staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As mentioned in the staff report for the public hearing, uh, we get um money from the sale of liquor, cigarettes, marijuana. Um, uh, alcohol, all that stuff, uh, gas tax, and we disperse some of it into the general fund. And then with that, we also have the fuel taxes that go into the street fund. So this action uh for resolution twenty twenty-four oh five just elects us to receive that uh as a city.
It's a standard thing that.
I mean, you don't have to take it, but.
Uh, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five to elect and receive state revenue sharing in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Clarification?
Yes.
Oh, six.
Oh, six, I just thought that, thank you.
Where was that?
Resolution twenty twenty-four oh six.
Oh, that down there has a typo, okay.
There a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I have on the table a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero six. To elect to receive state revenue sharing in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Next up, resolution two zero two four dash zero seven, adoption of the fiscal year two thousand point four twenty-five city budget. Making appropriations and imposing tactics. Before we get to staff report, though I can't stop council from making a motion. Um, especially with this topic, can we make sure we have a chance for public input, just so that we have our. Budget thing. Um, Brandon, staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this year's uh projected budget will be seventeen million, three hundred ninety-five thousand and forty-two dollars. Um, as mentioned in the public hearing, um capital improvement plan, we scaled back a little bit to show this year. Uh, we do wanna make sure Bridge Street was um, Bridge Street was addressed at least um to the effort to where we had discussed with the city engineer earlier this year. Um, uh, the tax rate's gonna stay the same, um, obviously, we have the money in there for um, for the uh water projects. Um, we also have some money in there for some grant matching this year. Um, and then we also have uh the personnel service cost increase with, you know, the um, cut the bargaining agreement. Um, and the cost of doing business. But, so um, I think everything is pretty much covered very well in the budget committee meeting, I'm trying to think if there's anything.
You got a clarifying comment, Brandon? Uh, when you say the, the grant matching, we're talking about grants we apply for, they will.
Yes, 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 matching funds.
For us to get outside money, not give.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Hey, any um public input on this? Okay, any council discussion or clarification? Free to motion or move on?
I think we worked really hard in the budget committee this year.
Thank you.
I do think that uh. Actual hands-on work from in the committee was a nice encouragement.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. Adopting the city Lafayette budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five of seventeen million, three hundred ninety-five thousand and forty-two dollars. Approved property taxes for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year at the rate of three point four eight five seven per thousand dollars of assessed value. For the permanent rate tax levy. And set the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the general obligation bond levy.
Anyone wish to second sound?
I'll second.
Okay, any further council comment? Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven, adopting the city of Lafayette budget. For the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five of seventeen million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, forty-two dollars and zero cents. Approved property taxes for the two thousand point four twenty-five fiscal year at the rate of. Three point four eight five seven per thousand dollars of assessed value for the permanent rate tax levy. And set the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the general obligation bond levy. Any further comment? Motion to approve? Or revoke to all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Motion passes unanimously.
We just made history.
Yeah, I'm putting out on my, I'm putting out on my headstone.
Don't let it get to your head, Brandon. Have a caught on, resolution, rate the numbers, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero eight. Recreational immunity, uh, Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last month, um, our city attorney kind of discussed recreational immunity. Um, while I don't think this is perfect, because I mean, I hate to say it, but I. Yes, we are, we can release, it voted on, the city can be released from any personal injuries or damages. But I mean, at the end of the day, this can look to a much bigger thing. So I know there's gonna be a lot of advocacy this year at LOC, the next uh legislative session, to really have some teeth in this, where this goes. But um I know after speaking with David, he feels confident that, you know. It's at least a step in the right direction for right now by saying that we're gonna release himself from any claims. Um, but obviously, this is gonna be a much bigger thing. I know we're, we're, we're working with our insurance company to kind of right-size. We would, like I talked to you all about Terry Park and what that kind of looks like and um for accessibility, but um as of right now. You're kind of the suggested.
Your apprehension is due to the uncertainty in the courts, is that my understanding, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I've been.
It has nothing to do with the draft.
So this is as solid as possible.
Yes.
Based on something that is ever-changing.
Any idea when it's gonna be handled by the court?
I mean, it's like the grand pass stuff with, with the house, I mean, this can just, this can be in courts forever. Depending, you know, if somebody wants to take it to the Supreme Court, they will. But I think right now, I think, at least until we get some greater clarification from LOC. Uh, this is probably the best way to go about it, and David recommended this, so.
Which will probably get some, last year, at least one of the conferences, there was a whole. Um.
Session.
Session based on this, and I wouldn't be surprised if, even if it has, hasn't moved forward in either direction, that it would still also be.
Do you know how much influence the legislature is going to have on this, this type of situation?
I mean, it's in their ears and their, and so a lot of the LOC attorneys are talking to the staff, but I think. At the end of the short session, it was kind of discussed a little bit, but there was just no desire to really discuss it, cause it was a short session, they had bigger issues, I guess, to discuss. Um, so I know, speaking with uh David, he mentioned there were, in their lawyer list, there was discussion on how they're gonna navigate it with LOC this year. So I'll try to get some updates when I go to my conference next week for the Inwood River, to see if there's any, any, anything going on with it, and I cannot beat you all. So.
All right, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. Zero eight, limiting city liability from claims of personal injury or property damage arising from public use of city property for recreational and other purposes.
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment? Hey, I have in front of me a motion to approve resolution two thousand point four dash zero eight. Limiting city liability from claims of personal injury or property damage arising from public use of cities' property for recreational. And other purposes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. Um, agenda item, city council support for Oregon's TGM planning grant. Which is for the transportation system plan update. Brandon, staff report?
Madam Mayor, so um, some of you who were on council last year, remember, I came to you all to apply for our transportation system plan update. Um, we were in, in this region, we did lose out to Dayton, um, but um. The next go-round's coming up, um, I spoke with ODOT staff, I spoke with some people at the cog, I think we're gonna have a much tighter application this year. Um, but we'll, we'll be at the mercy of the, of the um grant assessment gods. So um, what I just need similar to last year, I just need a motion that you support city staff's intent to apply for this grant. Um. The uh. For the transportation system plan update to the twenty twenty-four transportation and growth management program. And then I just take the draft minutes and I add them to the uh application packet. They just wanna know that city council is gonna support.
Yeah, and the reason for the TSP is update is cause ours is so out of date. And in order to go, well, not so, but it, in order to uh go after grants or other funding, we need to update ours. And that could. Be something that we need as we move forward with the long-term plan for.
And then I know we're like, I know we have our another, we have our meeting on Thursday, and I know that's gonna be a topic of that too, but. Then I know it's been a discussion of them, I know it's been a discussion of us, I think it's the one thing we're all in unison on, and it just, we're, we're at the mercy of the grant. The gods, so hopefully it works out well.
So to be clear, we're approving this to be submitted.
Yes.
And if it comes back for an amount over fifteen thousand dollars, it would have to come back to.
Correct.
Yeah, that's one thing that, I put that question on the last sentence, the city council would approve any expenditure, I'm not approving. Any expenditure over fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so basically, we're just giving you our support to spend the time and energy.
Yes.
Brandon, thank you for applying for grants and giving the city money. I'm going to move to the. Um, I move to support city staff's grant application for the transportation system plan upgrade through. The twenty twenty-four transportation and growth management program.
Okay, second? I have in front of me a motion to approve. Support city, support to city staff's grant application for the transportation system plan update. Through the two thousand point four transportation and growth management program. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. And Brandon, as you and I have talked, anytime you need any help with letters for grants or whatnot.
I do appreciate the one I got from you, I think two weeks ago, which I'm gonna touch base on.
Okay, I just, yeah, I'm, I don't know if other counselors have the time, but. I know that, please don't hesitate to reach out for. What's that? Okay, um, next up is the resignation of Jeffrey Olson from the Budget Committee effective June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
He moved, so um, I move to approve the resignation of Jeffrey Olson from the Budget Committee effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that one.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the resignation of Jeffrey Olson from the Budget Committee effective June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and Jeffrey, if you are watching this, um, we thank you for your time and energy. Not just serving, but also leading the meetings on the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up is just an update on city council vacancy. I asked Brandon to put this on. Um, but there is no staff report per se, it's just, um, I wanted to follow up. I spent thirty-day pause to solicit applications, as that is what I had been doing prior. Um, and at this, uh, you will see in your council packet, all of the, there was one application, I didn't meet with that applicant. Um, at this time, I am choosing not to move forward with filling the vacancy. Um, we, that does not mean that I. Don't still have that ability if I felt necessary in the future, but at this time. I feel it is in the best interest of the city to um leave it vacant as we enter into the election cycles. So that's all that was.
But I just wanna clarify though, if you receive other applications, are you gonna proceed with the normal course of?
I will, I will, yes, I will always reach out to applicants. Um, I won't, you know, there's no another thirty-day pause or whatever, but yeah, I am, will always, applications we always accept. And I always reach out, except for that one Marilyn that somehow polluted me, reaching out to the one, he's on budget now. But anyway, um, that's a conversation, my apologies, um, yeah, I will, um. Well, she fought hard to make sure, she's like, someone is waiting for your call, um. I will always continue to reach out to applicants. And if at that time. I feel I need to change my stance on leaving it vacant, I will. Move forward. This vacancy was up for election or the remainder of the seat. Term is part of this upcoming election. Um. So with that, oh, look, we moved into council discussion, um, Bridge Street update. Brandon?
So I know we talked uh, maybe four months ago, three, four months ago, there was a concern about, how can we? How can we take traffic off a bridge, the commercial traffic, get them, I don't wanna say don't come through town, but. Reroute some of the commercial traffic or the heavy-duty vehicles that are helping deteriorate uh Bridge Street. So as I mentioned a few months ago, I met with the Amel County just to talk about, hey, how can you help us out with any type of money, any type of funding, anything? And um, so I did get an email, I will read it all so I can be fully transparent. Um, what I had asked when Chad and I met were, what would you be able to do in terms of financially? What would you be able to do in terms of rerouting traffic off of Abbey, um, or any type of solution? So um, I'm afraid that there is no one that is safe, um, as efficient as Abbey Road. Um, the closest one would be Mineral Springs Road, but both ends of this road have tricky intersections to maneuver on the Highway ninety-nine and Hendrix Road. Not to mention a couple of curves that have uh poor sight distance. Uh, the intersection of Abbey and Hendrick Road was improved for sight distance for safety and. Uh, the intersection of Abbey and Hendrick Road was improved for sight distance for safety and trucks. Um, uh, O- ODOT does not have funds to share for these intersections right now, Tim Blue, Bridge R ninety-nine. Um, the county has many intersections that are problems with sight and stopping distance misaligned, safety problems that intersect with the ODOT Highway. We have asked for assistance on those funds, but we were told there was no funds to give as well. Therefore, the county has to come up with funds and improvements. Um, given, uh, for specific county properties, um, county funds are tight, uh, we won't be able to help, uh, we understand your predicament because we're in the same boat, so we we do apologize. So, long story short, that means we're on our own, at least for right now. So a couple of things that we can discuss that would, uh, take discussions with the state, um, putting in time with 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 the city attorney, mean, mean time means money, um, solutions. So, we're gonna move forward on Bridge Street, the the repaving, that's, it's gonna happen, the budget's approved. But we wanna see, how do we at least keep that is in the, in the, in the status is gonna be upon completion? So, right now, there's nothing really deterring any type of traffic or, you know, anything. So I don't know where the council wants to go. I can look at reaching out to the state, reaching out to the county and seeing what the traffic mitigation patterns can be. Um, but doing that, it's gonna take a lot of work with the state, a lot of attorney work. Um, we, I mean, we can always reduce his speed limit, but it's twenty-five right now. Um, I mean.
It used to be twenty-five.
I mean.
No.
We can.
We're not reducing.
We're not reducing anyone further. Oh, my God.
If if the council is really set on trying to reroute traffic, we can, we can do the work, but it's gonna take time and it's gonna take work on the city attorney. We can do whatever we need to do, but it's gonna take a lot of work and it may take a lot of lobbying, and it may upset a lot of other jurisdictions, including the county, the state, and the neighbors, like the winery.
So. So what if it upsets them? This is a nuisance. This whole thing is a disaster over here. ODOT did a horrible job when they redid ninety-nine, they didn't put in turn lanes, they didn't do anything. So who cares if it upsets them? We've got to fix the problem.
It, I, I'm at the stance where Bridge Street is one of our main streets, and yes, most, a lot of our people use that. However, it connects state and county, and not that I wanna go out there just to upset people. But if there's, you know, the, the statement you read is, we, we're in the same boat, or we tried, or we, we, um, fixed this intersection or this intersection for visibility or whatever, well, we're saying that ours needs to be, you know, that that's great that you did that, but you just assumed that ours could become that main artery. Um, I think there's two issues going on, our fixing of Bridge Street and our protection of that asset. Uh, I have already discussed with Brandon, and I have put, for that I will put in as much energy and effort it takes, that council wants to, whether it's lobbying or meetings or going before the county or statements, that I, um, a huge advocate for that Bridge Street is an asset of ours that's being abused and not abused by the people. And so I think we have some in-house decisions to make of what we wanna do just in general or in short term, and some of that might be discussion Thursday at our joint session. Um, uh, but I also think that long-term, we need to decide if we wanna put in that time and energy.
And it doesn't need to be right now. Obviously, this is just, I'll show the information, if you wanna maybe think about it, and maybe I could put it back on the agenda next month. So you maybe all have time to, you know, think about some ideas, or or how we wanna at least go forward with it. We will do whatever we need to do. You just let me know, we wanna move forward, but I wanna make sure if I move forward, it's gonna, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a regional, it's a regional street because of the access to, and they've said it's, it's, it's an economic driver because of the access to Abbey Road and the tourism that happens with it, but.
Just so building on that, and along what you said here, just, just because it connects to other parts of the county, I don't think the fiscal responsibility should all, we should bear the responsibility of all that by a lap. For example, Seventh Street, in theory, connects out to Stole the Road, which goes the rest of the county. If we had trucks coming down Seventh and destroying the street in front of the school all the time, we would do something about that. So I don't think this is much different in my mind. I don't think our citizens should be carrying the fiscal load of countywide transportation.
I think we're not gonna get smaller, we're growing in the.
It gives some ideas of how to go about it. I think that's the next step, connecting with him and seeing what options do we have so that we can make the informed decision on how best to proceed.
So maybe get a couple of options, and then bring what those options may look like, cost-wise, time-wise.
Yeah, some options of what it would look like to push for out-of-house, or, you know, for.
Are there any grants that are?
Probably not.
Well, yeah, well, and I even asked the county about state shed revenue money, and they said, well, we can't do cities, we can't do our own cities, their, their state shed revenue could only be used for county roads.
When you say you talk to county, are you, are you saying you talk to the county employees that oversee those departments, or have we? I know that you and I have met with a commissioner in regards to Bridge Street, but have we, we have not gone forth in public.
No, I've spoke with the county administrator and the public, we spoke with our peers at the county.
To make statements.
Yes.
And again, I think that's why it's best to talk with David.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a plan on who we should be connecting with, how we should be going about it.
Yeah, I think that's the next step.
Yeah.
You had mentioned weight.
We can do weight limits, I think right now it's twenty-five thousand pounds, I think, on, on that, on the street, right?
That's what we're.
You would go with that.
We don't know if it is or not, we're just brainstorming.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, um.
Yeah.
There can be a tonnage limit, and then that's gonna, that's gonna mean a lot of, I mean, that it could be done, but it may mean a lot of time where our deputies are sitting on Bridge Street.
The way to go with that is the number of axles. Keep the number, you, you know, no vehicles over this amount of axles, or, or whatever, so then you don't have to weigh them, you just, you have to count axles.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
It's like the ferry, that's, you know, the, the ferry that takes you over to the, you know.
Oh, Kaiser, right?
Yeah, that one is, you pay per axle, and that's when you do the weight.
Right.
I think for now, though, I don't think there's much we can do.
Yeah, so it sounds like council has given it the desire to protect Bridge Street, um, and we wanna do it correctly.
Just, I'm willing to play hardball.
Okay.
Take me along, I'll.
All right, perfect, okay. Oh, wait, real quick, public input on this.
Is there anybody that's, uh, asked questions of Carlton, because obviously we meet there somewhere, right?
We meet County Road.
We do, we meet the County Road and the County.
Yeah, so it's not.
They have their own issue of that road going into them.
But that is something that possibly, we could meet with Carlton, find out if they're having the same issues.
Yeah.
And how their relationships are advocating, you know, or to find out if they are getting a different support than we're getting.
Well, my guess is because Carlton, I mean, I guess it connects to Highway forty-seven, but because ours connects to, I guess it's our issue is probably a little bit worse than theirs.
Yes, but it'd be interesting to find out how they're handling it or what their answers have been or whatnot, but. Okay, are you, would you like to reach out to Carlton? Do you want me to reach out?
I'll, I'll knock it out.
Okay, um, moving on to department reports. Uh, recently, we changed it that reports are written only unless council requests otherwise. However, it sounds like during this meeting, council did request to table a statement from Chad, our Public Works Director, and allow him to speak during the report. So Brandon, I'll let you facilitate, um, item ten, and feel free to bring Chad up if you wish.
Yes, we, uh, uh, unless there's any other questions regarding the AP code enforcement, um, or fire report. Um, I know there are some questions regarding the meters with Chad, Chad, you wanna come up?
Christine, I'm sorry, um, we don't.
It's a, it's a question about the report.
About the report, our reports are, as of now, printed, and we're not discussing reports, correct, council? Is that what it is? Okay, I just wanna respect your.
My position was, if there's concern, that should be brought up, but to pull in all of these professionals to be here to just read to it, and we could read, I thought.
If I may, which report? The fire report, so since public works is before fire on the agenda, I do think we should have Chad.
Okay, I just wanted to respect the directive the council gave, okay?
Okay, thank you. So to do with the new, the water, we need a water loss, there with the, my mistake, not the meters.
Well, it has to do with the meters, and. So, upon investigation of the calculations that have been done for you, and I have a hard time figuring out, I found out that our billing software, or with the way we bill, it rounds to the nearest hundreds, hundred cubic feet down. Will always catch the revenue at some point, because the next month, you'll go over the hundreds, so you'll catch it, but it rounds down, well. I didn't realize during the consumption report, and historically, that's how everybody's calculated, or, or me, uh, it rounds down overall, so the report I did of how much the city consumed, it's faulty. So the numbers I use to calculate don't mean anything. So that's why, one of the reasons you see a wide variance, because you might have, I might have six hundred meters round down from, like, be at ninety-six cubic feet, so they round out to the lower number. Like, you got six hundred meters, do that, well, that's all we have on the line. And my, and then when I calculate it, that's why you might see a thirty percent loss one month, and you might see a fifteen percent loss one month, or rights first, so, uh, certainly, there's no better way to do it. So, I would suggest that I just don't calculate it, because we don't have the capability of giving you accurate numbers.
Have you ever connected with Doug Cook? Okay, he, um, he used to handle a lot of the water consumption and running the numbers, and he, I can't even explain what he did, but he was very knowledgeable in it, so that might be a connection that we should make. He lives in the Morgans Vineyard in Haway, up in, I believe, Jefferson.
And I was gonna get to answer your question, I heard you say, why is that name so far? He, um, is a previous counselor who also was on, at one point, we had a water committee.
Yeah, water committee.
I didn't want to say board, it wasn't, it's a, it was a committee that was researching different things.
And every month, he ran the numbers and came in with the numbers, and we reviewed them.
Yeah, I almost wanna say he was a group.
Um, and he was aware of the, the water loss and like the different, uh, he's very knowledgeable, he might be a good resource.
So if the software allows, I just, I just found out about this, if the software allows them it to give a report without rounding and the true numbers, I could do the calculations.
How would we?
I have to look into that, uh, it's something we just discovered, so, and I don't deal with the software.
So that might answer my, my question, is there a way to get the capabilities? My guess is the answer is we gotta reach out to the software.
Yeah, I haven't, I, I just found this out, so.
Okay, thank you for bringing it.
One thing I know we had discussed, I think, uh, uh, Council President Paulson was in favor of it, but we can, if not, you can, um, tell me that I'm not right, but we talked about possibly, once we get all the meters installed, going like, going to like acre billing, possibly, where there was
Yes.
Ac- actual consumption and changing our tiers to reflect that actual consumption, not rounding down, obviously, that's a longer conversation, but I know we had discussed that.
The problem that, um, Doug Cook would explain, how we were billing and everything, that was affecting all of this.
But it doesn't sound like it would affect um, water user ratepayers, because it's getting captured the next month anyway.
Yeah, it's getting captured at some point.
That's why not immediately, um, and so it's not, so the problem is, because that comes across as a wa- water loss for us. So it looks like we're losing water somewhere when we're really not.
Right, I'm agreeing, so I think I'm agreeing with you. If we switch that method, it won't, it won't affect the amount they're paying, just when they're paying it, one month versus the next, and it will allow for more accurate reporting, so that might be something for council, or your, your, for one of appropriate folks to establish.
And, and, and the new water leak, some of the detective, we got is great, we found a leak right, um, on the nine-hundred block, I think, of the grant, or, uh.
Yes, it was right up the nine-hundred grid.
Yes.
Yeah, so just to touch on that real quick, the investment we made in that, uh, technology, we've used it, um, uh, roughly seven leaks since then, and, uh, one was fifteen foot away. We could hear it, but we hear, heard it in the water meter box, it was actually fifteen foot on the other side, so. Instead of digging up the whole road, we were able to pinpoint and did up a small section.
That's great, fantastic. So, maybe with water gain and loss, maybe, and you probably have access to this, over time is where we can see, you know, uh, as you say, you know, ebbs and flows because of the billing, like, I'm looking at this, and I'm like, oh, watershed eight-point.
Yeah, just to tell you really quick, with the new reservoir, we're gonna give a flow meter up in the watershed, which will allow us to accurately calculate how much water peak flows, uh, daily peak flows, demand and stuff, which we currently don't have the ability to do, so that's gonna be a great thing to happen, but yeah. For now, I propose that I just don't give you the numbers until after I can give you accurate numbers.
So maybe.
They don't.
How long does it take you to calculate the numbers?
Uh, it takes, after we collect them and stuff, it takes about twenty minutes.
So I hate to be.
I've already made a spreadsheet.
But, just, because again, the way Doug was doing it, like, we were able to compare to previous months, and so I think it would be wise to still do it.
Yeah, if it's inaccurate, if we feel spot.
Yeah, or maybe once, once a quarter.
I'm gonna still collect all the numbers, punch, punch them into my spreadsheet and create it, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, perfect, yeah, isn't there maybe once a quarter, showing?
Just, just so you guys are aware, I think the numbers are not correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna wait for Brandon, oh.
Before, before you take off, can I see after the meeting?
Of course, yeah, I'm always. Yeah.
Oh.
You gonna get your rates for this?
I know.
Tiny or newer, Mina? I'm gonna, um. I'm just gonna wait for Brandon to return. I know what he's saying, but, um, I do know that Christine would like to speak, but I'd like Brandon to be. Yeah.
While we're waiting, I'm sorry I wasn't able to hear you. Work for leadership, I wanted to strike you. Holding away to hurry.
There was a lot of people out there when I drove by.
Yeah.
The backs of traffic.
Draw attention. Let me find out. Fire report, and at a residence request, we are going to, uh, discuss it. Christine, feel free to step forward. Sorry, I, I wanna make sure that audio and those watching can.
I'm Christine Rundgar, four-eight-eight Madison Street. I had a few questions about the, um, our, our report that was provided to the council this month. The first one, uh, there were zero new fires reported, but in the May incident logs, there was actually, um, on the reports, there was on five-twelve, a forest, woods, or wildland fire. These are all from the LFD's callouts. Um, a five-twenty-one trash or rubbish fire that was contained, and a five-twenty-seven building fire. Now, the reports that are provided in public record are not the ones that, by professional access, so you don't get that background information of, was this a mutual aid call tapped out somewhere else, was this here in town? Um, so clarification on that would be helpful. Um, another one was that there were, um, for new volunteers, it listed one new volunteer and one in background. I think it would be helpful for the council to know how many of those were new probationary volunteers, and how many are new experienced certified volunteers, and whether or not that paid staff is falling under that reporting. Um, I know we just got the grant for our seasonal staff. Um, under nights with volunteer personnel stopping at the station, it was reported there were thirty-one. I noticed in January, it started being an uptick, so all of twenty twenty-three, um, we were running nine to ten nights a month with stopping. And then in January, um, it started bumping up to almost every month, which is great, that's good. I, don't get me wrong. Um, my, my question is, um, from what I understand, it's for a volunteer that's residing at the station. And from what I understand, that's been approved by the attorney. Um, my question would be, how many nights of those staff nights had an emergency medical responder on? Because I know that volunteer does not have any, um, emergency medical certifications. I know that, that because that's all public record through Oregon Public Boarding, you look it up under EMR and EMP certifications, verify. Anybody that steps up and shows that card. Um, under the total number of calls, I think it'd be helpful for the council to know. Um, under the total number of calls, I think it'd be helpful for the council to know the number of medical calls they had, the number of fire calls, possibly other calls, and those they weren't able to respond to. And then also, um, in the report that I had provided too, I made some other recommendations, but they're not on this report, so if you got a question. Thank you.
Um, I do know that our fire chief is not here right now to respond to those questions or suggestions. Um, are there any council responses?
I would be in support of these recommended changes, I think, just, I mean.
I guess.
He has a song that makes it easy for him to calculate.
We are apparently putting, uh, documentation, so we actually had this mandatory, we were putting this state. There's also an additional, uh, national fire incident report, and it's mandatory for any departments receiving grants that they regularly report to federal, um, reports. And so, again, receiving grants, especially with that new system.
So, yeah, if they're already doing it, then.
I would be able to find this information to public records requests, obviously not predicated on some of these questions, but they have a CAD program that actually logs every detail of its calls. Um, this is all, I would not choose information instead of, right, nobody wants to spend hours putting it towards, each of things that fire chiefs.
No, and I think it's wise to have that, um, so we can see what needs our town need, um, if you're being met appropriately, um, so if the data is already being put together each month, we should just have it added.
I mean.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the more information, the better, it's transparency, I mean, I think government should always be transparent, but the alarming thing for me, Brandon, that was not, I shouldn't say before. The alarming thing for me, uh, is the new fire zero, so it was a fire, can we track down?
Yeah.
It's, it's possible those were mutual fire calls, but the problem is with the logs, as, I, I, I should show you an example, but it's it's only the date and the call, what type of call it is, I'm not provided, I wasn't provided, probably the same times, which is very unfortunate. Um, or.
Could have been a situation that it was a reported fire call, and then there wasn't a fire, so.
Well, that was, that, that actually does come with the logs as, you know, in town, so that's in there, and there are logs of mutual aid calls, so I'm not sure that it was a mutual aid call, I don't know. I was shown that those logs aren't always a hundred percent accurate. Um, so, and that's why I forgot to slamer at the point of that intervention is that really, this is can only be validated the best to somebody who has some public information, you know? The fire chief will be the one by most accurate.
So Brandon, can you clarify with chief this new fire zero? Um, and then let council know if there I guess either way, if that was standing or how he came up with that zero, um.
Is it okay for the weekly report on Friday to?
Yeah, it doesn't have, yeah, just let's follow the loop or whatever, but, um, Counsel Kit, did you have a question?
Oh, I think there was some validity to that, because I personally called, um, non-emergency, because it looked like there was a fire in a spot where you couldn't quite see if there were flames, or if it was a controlled burn, and you know, it's fire season, so I personally did call non-emergency to report smoke.
And then we're leaving up to competitors.
Yeah.
That's all I'm adding, is I think there's validity, because I personally know I called them to report things.
And then, Brandon, Brandon, did you get, or I guess it would be Kennedy or both of you, an accurate list of the suggestions, uh, Christine made of to add to the report?
Yes.
I think it's the last page of.
Okay, that's already, okay, I didn't know if it was matching or, okay, um. Yeah, I think transparency and, at, you know, gives council a chance to compare things based off of what they're looking for, and then just the, um, this. I also, so, I also understand the amount of effort and time, but it's, you know, it sounds like the information is what you said, so, um, yeah, if you would just, uh, touch base with, uh, chief, and we'll see them hopefully at the next month's meeting. And then if we still need to tweak it or fine tune it, we can go from there.
Would you like chief to be here next meeting?
I mean, we, I need to talk to you first.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so based off of everything else, if you feel at any time you guys would like chief to be here, please let Brandon know what's time to invite chief to be here.
I got a few more things as part of the, yeah, sorry, um, just as a reminder, next, uh, Monday through Thursday, I will be in Hood River for the OCCMA conference. That's the one I got the scholarship for, that you all approved the travel, thank you again. Um, next month, we, I think we should have everything ready with our, um, GIS, um, uh, our GIS mapping, so for some of the newer counselors, I may have skimmed through it in our discussion during the budget committee, um, but when I first came on board, we're looking at, um, getting all of the infrastructure on, on a GIS platform for water and sewer, so we can be able to pinpoint things, know exactly where our, where our lines are at. Um, I think we had budgeted thirty thousand for it, I think I'm right under. So I'm trying to negotiate a little bit more on some other things that we may need, um, but I wanna kinda try to keep it below where we need to be, so we should have that at the next meeting, see how that goes.
Um, you define GIS.
Oh, uh, the geographical information systems.
Okay.
So we would have like a tablet, we'd be able to zoom in, we know exactly where things are at.
Okay.
Um, we're not having to dig things up on, like, we have paper maps now from like thirty years ago. It's just more of an efficiency thing as we get into the modern age.
Sure.
I'll just step away, but it'll show roughly where the systems are and stuff, since we're not physically going out and, uh, locating them with a, uh, yeah, um.
Ground radar.
A detector, but actually, actually getting the coordinates and putting them in itself, because they're gonna go off previous maps and stuff that we have that are only as accurate as those people may think. Doesn't mean that you'll know that it's in the, the water service in the sidewalk.
But two questions, so it will be more accurate than the Quill created scrolls we have currently, right?
Hey, that's part of the Fourth of July is the Quill writing, so we can make it.
Secondly, is that, is that a system we can, like, if you do have to dig up one specific thing, can you update that software to show like, hey, we found this here, it was actually off a little, okay?
Yeah, it's something we can put into there, but yeah.
So we can certainly.
Yeah, the system's not actually, they're not physically coming out, and we're not gonna keep graphing each, we're not.
Is at one point you have to dig up a leak or something, you realize that the system was like ten feet off, you can update this.
Yeah, I can send them to everyone, I just wanted to let people know that, you know, trusted a hundred percent to go dead without. And, um, yeah.
All breathing.
And I do wanna thank, um, I do wanna thank the engineer at, uh, who's doing whole. They provided me their plans for the water service lines, even though they didn't have to do that, they gave me that information, so I do wanna thank them publicly. They didn't have to give that to me yet, but they did, so to make things easier. Um, and the audit, you all received the audit, um, it can't be at the July meeting for scheduling conflict, but they'll be here for August to just visit, verbally give their presentation on the audit. Um, I applied for the Safe Rest to School Grant last week, after about two and a half weeks of putting the application together. Thank you to everybody who provided a lot of recommendations, Sarah, Mayor, I got one from LCAT, I got them from, uh, LDA, I got from a bunch of people, some parents. So we, we applied for four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to go from Jefferson down to Bridge. Fingers crossed, I think we demonstrated the need, I think the money's there, so I feel pretty good about that. Um, and also, lastly, PGE, um, I spoke at the public forum, you've all seen the video, hopefully, through the link, I was the first one to speak. Um, I got a lot of heat locally, um, so my peers for some of the things that I said. Um, but at the end of the day, um, I'm not here for my peers, I'm here for the residents and my council. Um, so, um, I know that they scaled back the rate increase for Pacific Corp. I saw, I'm sure we all saw that last week, so hopefully they feel the same way on PGE. It will hopefully mitigate that to a lower rate increase, if at all. So as soon as I find out, I will let you all know, thank you so much, oh, and my evaluations are all sent to you, so those should be in your email, thank you.
I have to carve time away with not my kids bothering you, um, council reports. Any counselor have anything to report on? Okay, uh, mayor's report, I think the only thing is to just share that, um, I'm working with LCAT to support their summer events. And, um, I did receive a scholarship to attend the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference, um, in July. Not the week of meetings, so please, guys, don't switch the meeting on me, um, but they are, uh, lodging and, um, conference is part of that, and it's down in Climas Falls, but I will not be requesting any kind of mileage or whatever, that's something I'm happy to absorb. And look forward to bringing back any more information to you guys for that, um, other than that.
Meeting on Thursday, don't forget, same time, same Pat channel.
Oh, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, it will be a joint work session, but a council meeting, joint work session, so, um, with that, we're on to number thirteen.
I'm into it.
All second.
Meeting adjourned. Okay, fine, all in favor.
Hi. I thought you were gonna say.